I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this long with liberty and justice for all.
Eagle Bay City Council, January 19th, the exception.
Team?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Here.
Sparks? Olson?
Here.
Maffalo?
Here.
Gambino?
Here.
Grant?
Aye.
Somebody like to approve the events? Uh, Mr. Mayor, I am moved that we have three minutes from January 5th, 2016. May the circumstances be...
Let's go to the exact exception and where they're sitting.
Yes. Team?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Maffalo?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Council's payable. Mr. Mayor, I am moved that we approve the council's payable as presented. No second call please.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Maffalo?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Team?
Yes.
On the special orders. Item A, 2014-15 Audit Report Presentation, turn it in. Would you like to come up?
Good evening. Uh, 2015 audit, uh, it's a clean opinion. This year is seeing the adoption of Gatsby 68. And it's recognizing, it's a process of recognizing the pension liability. That process has not been completed yet. Uh, what has occurred is actuaries made valuations, um, of pension obligations as of June 2013. We went back in and we, um, we stated some numbers in 14 and then part of that was, uh, adjustments occurred in 15. But it'll be in June 2016, you're gonna actually see the resulting liability hitting your books. Uh, this is very similar to, this change is similar to many years ago when I came to the council to explain that you need to book your infrastructure, your assets. Well, now we're looking, you need to book all your liabilities now, so you have a full picture of where the city stands. So what I'd like to do, um, is just give you a general, uh, view of the presentation. And I'm gonna start on page two. This, this again is a clean opinion, but there's an emphasis of matters due to the morrow's, um, Oregon Supreme Court. Uh, there was a change, there was a, um, change in the benefit of the terms and that's not been determined what the impact is. So all the work that's been done by the actuaries, they now to, need to incorporate this, uh, supporting Supreme Court ruling. And that took place, uh, in April of 2015. So the emphasis is matters, just noting, this is your best position as we, as we know it, June 2015. But there will be another impact coming. And I know in June 2000, the following year, June 2016, you'll probably see a liability on your books. As a result of the completion of Gatsby 68 and then also this impact of the Supreme Court. It specifically, um, impacts the city. I'm going to...
Are we allowed to ask questions or should we wait?
No, you're welcome, please.
Um, we just got this today.
Yes.
Uh, talking about the pensions and the PERS. Um, I see you booked a total for 76,000 this last fiscal year. That's what it says on page number seven.
Okay.
Um, and that's the liability we incur every year to put into the PERS fund, correct?
Uh, let me take you back to page four.
Okay.
Because page four reflects the gyration, I think that's not a technical term, the adjustments that go on. We're comparing 2015 to 14 and I'll specifically take you to, uh, the activity, governmental activities on 2014. If you go down half, down that table one, you're seeing a pension liability for the governmental of 149,000. Going further to the right, uh, 312,694 to 461,000. That's the liability they determined had you closed your doors in June 2014. That would've been the city's obligation. We also do an adjustment. These are actuary numbers and tables that they provided us to implement within your system. 2015, when you flip up here then, we're adjusting for deferred outflows and deferred inflows. That's, um, not easy to explain, um, but it's part of the adjustment that's gonna take place in 2016. I believe you are gonna have a liability sitting on your books in 2016. It could be very similar to this order in 62,000. It may go up, it may go down because of the Supreme Court, Oregon Supreme Court adjustment. But this is an actuary's hands and they're the specialists in this area. So, again, the, the actuary measurements were taken in June 2013. They were brought to 14 and we made some adjustments to make your 15 and 14 comparable. But the actual liability that'll be put into place will be reflected on in June 2016. So my estimate of being around 400,000 is...
And that's gonna be taken off of, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a liability that's going to be sitting on your books if it's not there today.
Yes.
Funded or underfunded?
It's a liability that's unfunded. We're, uh, everybody that's in PERS, they're going through this gyration and it's been a pretty lousy time, it's not a year. Implementing this. We've got fire districts, uh, their liabilities, we're talking over 100,000 for some. Um, it's, it's a half, it has an impact, there's no question about it. And that's my guess, best estimate, based on what I saw in June 2014.
Half million dollars.
Yes, yes.
So, so we're still on, uh, when I'm looking at this pension liability, um, you're still taking, uh, PERS off of page four?
I'm looking at page four, yes.
Okay, so the unfunded liability is, what, 2014 plus, okay, we, is the year that we've got an unfunded liability?
Okay, this is a process based on June 2013. Actuaries, they bring it to 14, 14 had a liability, they gave adjustments, again, bring you up to 15. One more year of adjustments will bring back a liability for 16. And we, because we are comparing 14, or 15 to 14, we had to reflect some of those adjustments to make comparable. This is not easy to explain and I can't give you final number today either, um, which I appreciate, um...
Yeah, for, for budget purposes coming up.
Yes, okay, for budget purposes, there is no consideration other than you're seeing what the PERS rates are coming down to you on. And that, um, hurries in contact with them, those, those reports come down automatically. So the budget impact is what your rates are going to be when you get prepared each year.
So it obviously not going down.
I would, I'd be surprised.
Yeah.
I would be surprised. So, budget purposes, that's a good question. It's gonna be the rate you're seeing coming up each year. And, um, from that point, we complete your budget schedules and then we bring you up to full accrual where we pick up the liabilities that are unbooked. So, um...
So these, these...
Our balance sheet looks great this year.
Pardon? No?
I'm, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, no, what did you say?
No, I just said our balance sheet looks much better this year than it will next.
So, right, so are you saying that based upon this court decision, that, uh, now, this unfunded liability would be a composite of, of, uh, different employees that step into PERS at different rates?
Yes.
And that, uh, it was, and this court decision was based upon a suit brought by, uh, those recipients or those applicants?
Was it over Colas, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, um, the actual explanation a little bit is, is broken out on page two. The decision that was made, um, and actually I have more of a detail on that opinion. It's on page, let's see, page 37. The ruling actually took place April 30, 2015 and it was, um, it felt the limiting of post-retirement co-defendants that accrued prior deciding that law was considered unconstitutional. So yes. And that, that impact has not been determined.
And so, uh...
At this point.
So it's retroactive back to how, how many years?
Um, I don't know. I specifically don't know, 2000, um...
Probably not 17.
It was in October 2013, would be my first guess.
I'm gonna have to go on, just, just curious.
No, sure.
My question is, do we have a plan to fund all of this unfunded?
We're gonna start to start talking about that.
Yeah, it's...
Talking a half a million dollars.
Half billion dollars, that's right. Something that's a draw in the back of the bush here.
Uh, ideally we'd be able to give you a better idea before the year ending coming up here in June 2016.
Well, it is what it is.
Yes.
So any more questions?
Uh, it's pretty involved certainly and it's not an area, I don't specialize in actuarial, never want to either. Uh, it's pretty involved, uh, we have 12 pages of required, but no disclosures. We went to two classes for guidance and, uh, what we worked out, we passed a by our own society to make sure we were on the right track. And I get audited every few years, I just went through review last week, fine, so we're, um...
Yeah, we talked about something positive in the audit.
Yeah, positive in the audit. Um, the city actually had a pretty, pretty decent year. Its enterprise funds, uh, ended up with more cash in your bank, um, under cash flow statements, uh, bring you to page 14. That shows that you started a new year and I'm looking to the far right, you have 2.4 million, uh, your profits and losses. We take out all the accruals, take it down to cash. And so you can see up, there's 439,040 that you increased your, your bank accounts with, on year end. So, I'm happy to provide that, that information, so. It was, you know, the last several years have been pretty smooth years. I appreciate they're tight, but they're managed well, there was no budget overages. That's, that's a good reflection of what's going on. I am pleased to see that, uh, you're gonna be getting new software. Well overdue. I think the staff does very well. And it's certainly, information's readily available, but hopefully that's gonna make their life, uh, smoother. Of course, getting acquainted with software takes a little bit, um, but I'm looking, I'm looking forward to that, bringing the city up. But it was, it was a good year and, um, I appreciate the staff, um, they get a draft of the report, uh, hurry, read it and ask good questions, good comments. We focus on restricted cash. Mr. Katch is very important for meeting your obligations, particularly your debt or your CDCs. Uh, she's, uh, she's one of the few that actually reads this in depth.
That's why we wanted to let her lead.
I agree with, I agree with that. Um, some of the bigger cities, um, I don't get that, it's thorough, uh, response, so, um... I feel it was, it was a good year, it was, it was a little unusual for us, for dating Gatsby adopted and implemented within the statements themselves. And then to explain it to third parties, I don't think I've been too successful yet. Other than just conveying that there is an obligation out there. And we're not, we're not quite there yet and with the Supreme Court adjustment, we don't know quite yet, um, what that impact is.
So all cities are gonna be seeing this?
All municipalities, Oregon, yes.
Okay.
At that, this is nation-wide. No, 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 this is nation-wide and Illinois is part of what triggered this. But it's all, it is a complete reflection of where the city is with your assets. And this is the bigger end of it, your obligations. This is part of your cost of your doors being open, part of the cost of staff.
The, I'm sorry to go back to this unfunded liability. When, when are there gonna be a cash call on that? How, I mean, John made a point, it's a good point, we've gotta fund that. I mean, that's for the financial health of the system.
And I'm not sure, you know, what's next to be provided, because long-term debt, we do amortize what's anticipated. Well, what you've signed up to actually pay, so you have something on concrete and you know at a certain date you're obligated. I would imagine, but I've not seen anything, that doesn't mean it's not out there, that PERS is gonna give you some kind of a feel. And it's gonna be based on...
They'll give us a number of years to work through the problem.
Yes, it, they, uh, yes, there has to be some provisions because of many municipalities being in position. So no reserves.
Right.
Or very little reserves.
We're blessed with that, but...
Yeah.
So, in point of fact, I just wanted to make clear that going forward from this decision for this budget year, we're not gonna incur any more liability based upon what we're paying in PERS this year, are we?
Oh, on top of your normal PERS?
No, 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 well, uh, we're, we're paying PERS at the, are we, let's, I guess, my question is, are we paying PERS this year based upon the court's decision?
No.
So, we're gonna continue to incur this unfunded liability in spades every year until we catch up with, with paying that liability, at least for the current year?
Well, we're paying the current liability.
No, she's saying, she's saying that we're not paying that, that extra liability.
Well, that extra we're not paying.
Right, we're not on that table on top, which we don't have a defined goal with that number of this.
So, even if we wanted to pay that amount, I guess, this year, to, to at least not incur any more debt as the years go on?
There may be provisions, there may be provisions to do that if you have a fund.
We would have to increase our contribution, maybe not to pay that PERS count that year, but send it over another fund, right? So that way it's fun.
You can do that internally as well, yes.
Right.
That's true.
So we're gonna...
Well, it's something we should look at sooner rather than later.
Well, I just, I just, I, I don't wanna see us continue to incur more and more debt.
I agree.
I thought we don't know...
But we don't know, but it doesn't mean we can't be proactive during the budget, uh, cycle and stick some extra aside, no one will...
No, no, we, we, we're the principal, you know, they're gonna give us time, yeah.
Go ahead, John.
We have to make some kind of provision to take care of some of this back.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, let's say that it's 20 or 30,000 extra that we might be incurring each year now. We need to be making 50,000 or 70,000 dollar payments to get this thing up. And we're sending it to Salem.
We gotta get credit.
Because they want...
We're probably getting a little ahead of ourselves, but, uh, but the long and short of it is, is that as we budget, we have to remember that this is going to be something that has to be dealt with. So, I'd say, you know, budget cycle's coming up in two or three months, we get on it right away. Chip away.
Are they gonna charge us, are they charging us interest on this unfunded amount at this point in time?
I don't know what their provisions are.
Guaranteed they are.
Well, they're natural, they're not a bank, yes. Um, and certainly, um, you have a lot of unknowns and, uh, keeping in contact with PERS and they're going through the bumps right now, the impact. And I'm sure they're getting that class, but being aware what they're envisioning or suggesting, um, that'll help clear some of the fog. Find out what their intentions are, or suggestions, or what are other, certainly what other municipalities are looking to do.
And does this affect anybody, any group of people that's on PERS, including, uh, not just municipalities, but districts?
Yes, yes.
Like fire district, court district?
Exactly, I did a presentation last week to a fire district. Yeah, anybody who's in the PERS program.
I got a question about, um, the different tiers. Um, I heard that you have certain employees that are tier one and tier two compared to a lot of newer employees after 2003. Does that have a dramatic impact?
It almost impact.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which, the majority of our, our, uh, employees are, uh, after 2003, I think we have four that are tier one, tier two, and the rest are all after 2003.
Their chair, I hope, will get something to retirement.
Yeah, it's a IPA.
Can you pay L M?
No.
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 Well, I appreciate what, you know, what the cities realizing, uh, we'll be going to another class in, um, last week of January, Monday, the 25th, we're gonna be hearing more about it, I'm sure. And, yeah, people asking questions, what are the options? Whatever I can glean from that will certainly pass on. The direct contact with PERS and just seeing what the picture unfolding is and what are the options, what are they envisioning? That's gonna be guidance for the decisions, either we stop sitting aside eternally or what are the options?
Well, yeah, I can see the judgment, I mean, there's, judgments are gonna come down, they can't, I don't think, there's only so many years they can, they can go back, you know? In other words, they can't go back to probably 2000, I would say seven years maybe, uh, where there's a statute of limitations.
Yeah.
I don't know what it is, I don't know.
I'm not a lawyer either.
So, excuse me, Ms. Greenspan?
Yes.
Uh, I, I, I wanna try, just for fun, because I, I, I've never called you by your first name, but I wanna try, I wanna try and say it first. Is it Signe?
Signe.
Signe, okay, all right. Do you mind if I call you by your, your first name?
Not at all.
Okay.
Anyhow, um, it's also been a busy year for us too. The division of audits, I'm stepping out of normal. Um, they, they want their audit emailed by 12:31. With the Gatsby adoption this year, it was a major impact. And there was no problem getting extension for 30 days. I envision that maybe that flexibility lessening in the future. So, that will get us to start a little earlier, get the draft out a little earlier and coordinate with, you know, municipal council meetings. So, couldn't avoid, um, needing a book extension, but we sure appreciate it this year. It was an unfun year. But your books were in good shape, there was something specific to the city of, uh, Eagle Bay. It went, it went smooth, as I expected, and I wasn't disappointed in that. And, uh, I appreciate the feedback we get. It's nice, uh, the people actually look, it's, it's your product really. It's, uh, what, what you achieved, um, this year. As far as the enterprises, um, it's a reflection of any, the input of cash we've done, sure can be spent. It's budgetable anyway. Other than that, I can certainly take you through it. It, the bulk of it again is represented by the, uh, the Gatsby 64, which again, on page seven, it's more reflective. Now, this is the transitional, it changes our presentation a little bit, where we reflect as well the free outflows and deferred inflows. And we show a net pension asset sitting on your books, uh, and that's broken out between your governmental and your enterprise funds. And then a net pension at the bottom, that's, we're looking at that restricted now. So, your unrestricted is what you have readily available, um, that's being deducted on this 2015 by 205,000 because of this Gatsby 68. So, um, be aware of that. On page eight, that's reflecting your revenue as expenditures. And I'll take you to the far right again. The change in net position to the far right, um, it's two thirds of the page, is 914,268. That's your, your excess readily over expenditures and that's with depreciation as well. So, um, that's broken out between governmental and enterprise funds.
Signe?
Yes.
Uh, so what you mean by, uh, that, that, uh, the unrestricted cash is, is, is lower than it was? By Gatsby, you mean that there's been a new set of, um, standards?
Exactly.
That, that come down that are more conservative than they were before?
Well, it's a new set of standards that's completing readily available cash. And right now it's at the 208, I think that number is, and that... That 205,188, it's just, it's a, it's a restriction, that is, you have your ag at each closure, that's money that's very, for specific purpose and cannot be used for other purposes, uh, your debt service restricted and capital projects. Grant monies are restricted, if they come in for a specific purpose and have been spent, are restricted. This net pension asset now, that is restricted, that's restricted funds.
And so that's, so, uh, last year before these new standards for, for, uh, audit, audit interprets came down, we would've had a little more.
You would've had more in your unrestricted.
More, but, but really not, because they, they weren't dedicated funds.
The unrestricted, okay, um, you would've had more in your unrestricted.
Right.
But now that door's closing more and it's pulling from your unrestricted.
There are gonna be some cities that are coming close to being insolvent in this. It's possible, isn't it?
It, it's, it's possible, but they don't want to close your doors, they want you still up and running. So, I'm sure there's gonna be some safety valves put in, because there's a lot of entities that are in a poor position.
We're not wanting to...
Another city or two that are, that are tight. And staff, they're not replacing staff as they go. So this situation's not unusual and you'll be hearing, and I'm sure it'll be speaking with other cities.
Do you have a recommendation for how much we need to start putting in? Are we gonna go 10 years to make up half a million dollars?
I can't speak, I can't speak to what's on their agenda. Uh, they certainly have something planned, um, because this is staying with several years in the making, coming. And I'm sure they have something there, I've not been privy to it yet, but this is certainly, because of public now, I'm sure it, uh, you're gonna be hearing more discussions are gonna be out there, as they are tonight. And, yeah, what, what can the city anticipate? They need to, where, what's the process of pulling that number down? What's, how are the rates gonna be impacted and what are, what are the options?
The telephone?
That's an option. Anyhow, I do appreciate your concerns. It's definitely a heads up. Anyhow, I do appreciate your concerns. It's definitely a heads up. One question.
There's just three quarters by the time you never want me to count.
That's why I fired you.
That's right. I don't feel so bad about paying my account.
They go, they go there so you don't have to. Actuarial's not that I would choose.
Very tedious.
Yes.
So, we're gonna survive the year, you know, cash?
You have survived the year, and you're on your way to wrapping up 2016.
Guess now it's time to consume this thing. Thank you so much. Watched you five years ago.
Mr. Mayor, do we have a, would we make a motion to accept the audit report, or is that something that's automated?
Make a motion, almost.
Does it accept the audit report, or is that just automated?
The council typically does.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I, I'm sure it's great, but I haven't had time to read it. I, I mean, honestly, I haven't had time, because I've always taken the time over here to read this. I'm sorry, Signe, it's not the most high way to read it, but I do read it.
We've been really, we've been, we've actually worked seven days a week. It's just this Gatsby 68 adoption's really pulled us. And I appreciate, as soon as we knew we were gonna make councils deadlines, other people's board meeting deadlines, we contacted them, said we gotta go for an extension.
Right. Joe, can we, can we put it off a week?
Sure, absolutely sure. Yes, I was gonna, I really just have a question that, that probably could be answered, you know, with time we have left. It's just, which, the short, the short question is, is do you see any very red flags that we need to be aware of at this time?
No, no, I do not, and I would've brought that up.
Right, I thought, that's what I thought, thank you.
The only thing I, I appreciate, we are looking at January 31st, which is a Sunday, I presume February 1st is acceptable, but we do want electronic to file. The Division of Audits as well, they're keeping track now of those that are delinquent. And the city's never been in that position. There's some entities that haven't filed three to four years.
So, February 1st is your deadline?
Um, you know, I'd rather do it the 29th to be on the same side.
But you need us to approve it, to be able to...
We do, so we can electronic file it.
Well, that's just, yeah.
And I'm certainly available anytime. If there's questions, Curry can email me or by phone. And whatever I glean from the 25th, I'll certainly pass on as well.
Let's call it. Let's call Jerome's question.
Goldblatt?
Olson?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Tean?
Yes.
Bishop Brown?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, you can give one of these copies to Peggy.
Yeah.
Bill, you want the Budget Committee to?
Yeah.
How about we get a copy of Bill's too, Brad?
We brought several tonight.
Sheriff, sit in that hole, take a look, take a look there. Alright. On to item six, reports of officers, boards, and standing committees. Right side. Yeah, alright, thank you. Thanks, Signe.
Thank you.
Public comments. Fund base business. Fund base conclusions and final order, case file one, appeal CC15, appeal of planning commission decision application, request for a plan development amendment, case file one, D A C, or BD B C 15. You need to read that, Curry?
I don't think so. And Larry drafted this. This is, this is your verbal decision from your last meeting reduced to writing. So, there's gonna be, almost be quiet, but let him talk.
Well, I, you know, I believe this reflects your decision in the last meeting, and I certainly drafted it, once the city committee previewed. So, unless you want me to go through it in detail, if you have any questions, or...
Do we need the motion on that? Check if somebody wants to make a motion. What's the motion supposed to say? That we accept the, the writing and the appeal? No, excuse me, that's wrong. We're gonna accept the staff report as to what was, what's the motion?
The finance conclusion of the order.
We're accepting it. Mr. Mayor, then I move we accept the finance conclusion of the final order pertaining to the Pupetti properties appeal number CC15.
Second. Goldblatt?
Mathel?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Tean?
Yes.
Bishop Brown?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Then we're on to the social media, or media.
On this agenda, I, I redistributed my December 14th memo to you. It was on the December 15th council meeting agenda, and it was supposed to fill, I could be there, I guess, to discuss with you. So, that's all I did, is I redistributed that memo, where I talk about social media, and I had recommendations, if the council wants to move ahead with having a social media presence for the city. I had six recommendations, and this, these recommendations came based on research I had done, discussions with other cities that have Facebook pages, and there's, there's a few, cities our size. And I also used that League of Oregon Cities Local Focus, dated November 2015, where I had quite a series of articles in. So, if the council would like to proceed with, with creating a social media presence, there's choices. Here, Facebook all the time, if there's other social media opportunities, platforms I think they're called, yes. So, if you'd like to proceed, then just let me know. I'll work with the attorney to draft up a policy to bring back.
I'm just, I was reading your memo that we're installing our software here next week or two.
Next week.
Next week. And, you know, this is a big undertaking that you folks are doing. This is huge for the city. And I, you know, although I, I don't have a problem with social media in general, I don't know if we need to throw it in the mix right now. I'd rather get past this software updated and installed, get you guys comfortable with it, and perhaps there's some tie-ins with this new software for this kind of stuff. I don't know.
Certainly. Looking to that.
Right, so I, I'm just of the belief that maybe this is not the right time to really ratch it down on this. You guys have a lot of issues to fight.
I appreciate your consideration of the staff's time in the next, well, next week's gonna be a cruncher, and then we'll go from there.
Does that mean we're not gonna have bills on time this next month for law?
Oh, no, no, no.
Some of you law.
Counselor here, real. I, I agree with Counsel President, this is not the right time. You're gonna be very, very busy, staff is. And I think we should actually table this for a considerable amount of time as a result, because it's gonna take a long time.
Get comfortable with the software, maybe look at it in two or three months. See how it goes. That's, that's my suggestion. Counselor, break this.
Okay, so with all due respect, to, and of course, to the workload that you guys are carrying, and the fact that, you know, I've had to go through that, you know, new software type training and things like that, and, yeah, you're gonna be stunningly busy. And I totally appreciate all of the efforts that has gone into this, and is going into getting us up into the 21st century. That being said, I don't know if Jerome can court there, could confirm this for me, but what I do know is that the business that I work for had a wonderful weekend, thanks to a number of different factors. One of which was the spectacular wave action that we had going on this weekend. In fact, it was a three-day weekend. And social media, because I know that, I put it out on my Facebook page, you know, I'm, I'm talking to my, one of my employers and trying to help her keep her spirits up, because, you know, things have been a little dismal lately in the downtown corridor, and, you know, those of us who, who live, or, you know, who live and work there, sometimes it's hard to tell which is which, know that that's true. However, then, you know, Friday night, I see on my Facebook, on Facebook, wow, we're gonna have spectacular waves this weekend. And so I forwarded that to her, and say, did I say there was gonna be nothing to see this weekend? Why was I wrong? And, you know, three-day weekend, and, you know, I put that on my Facebook page. Everybody that's friends with me sees all that. And, you know, see, hey, there is something we have at the coast for. So, you know, with all due respect, tabling it for a month or so, I would, I would say, okay, because I know you guys have a lot to do. But I don't, I think that tabling it for three months, that's gonna put us into, what, March, April? And I think that that's when we really would want to have something like that, at least up and running and started. Or, you know, or starting, maybe not fully flushed out, but started, so, so that we can continue to develop it over the summer, because it's, it's impossible to overestimate the number, the impact that just people posting pictures and saying, I had this great experience, I went to this place, and they treated me like I was a goddess, you know? I had such a good time, look what we found on the beach, things like that. And it's just impossible to, to overestimate the impact that that can have on, on the businesses, because they see people right here now doing this, and you could be here doing that, you know, doing this too. And so, I'll support, you know, I'll support tabling it, but not for like two or three months. I, I think that after we get the software stuff going, after you guys have gotten your training, and, and, you know, gotten that, you know, worked into smoothly, I think that, that that should be something that we should really direct some attention to.
If, if I might respond to that. What you're talking about, and it's great, it's great advertising, it's great promotional, it's great sharing. What you're, what you're talking about really is more of a, a community Facebook page. Like, members of the community create this Facebook page, where it's not a governmental entity that has to meet all of the public records requirements. Because some of the other cities I talked to, they have their city website, which is very similar to one of those six items. I mean, it's a government website. Then there's folks in their community that have created a Walport community page. It's got nothing to do with the city. There's no public records requirements. There's no, there's none of those legal requirements that the city has to comply with. So, there's a lot more freedom. It's much more a personal Facebook level. So, I would, I'm only mentioning this for, for the council to think about. There is a difference, so, anyway.
Grant?
Go ahead. Would we be better served then to be having the Chamber of Commerce facilitating a Facebook page for the city of Deepwater Bay?
Possibly. I don't know. I don't believe they're under the public meeting and public records laws that the city's under, but I'm not sure. Should ask that. Now, like I say, one of the cities I talked to, it was just a group of people in the community. They got the Facebook page, and they share lots of cool pictures.
I know that Michael Babinski started a Deepwater Bay, Oregon Facebook page, that is not his personal page. You know, he's used it for just local events and things like that. And the Chamber of Commerce idea, I think, is, is a good one. So, maybe that, maybe rather than the city council being the force behind it, maybe it's something that we should explore.
It seems, again, with the cities that I talked to, those community pages are very popular, very popular. Like I say, they, they're, they're posted, if you will, by either individuals or a group of individuals that are not a public entity. They don't have to comply with all those regulations.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, it's something to think about. And again, I appreciate you guys giving us time, because, yeah, we're gonna be, we're gonna be fresh with the new software.
Counselor? Curry, I have a question. On the back of the sheet, that has the listing of all the cities. The ones that are listed, you've got some of them green, some of them blue. I guess the blue just indicates it's more than just Facebook? No, no, it doesn't.
This is Emma's survey.
Oh, I see. 2,001 to 5,000 people. Okay, I got that. Alright, thank you. Of these ones that say Facebook, are they all city-run, or are some of these, that Curry's talking about, about being community-driven?
I'm Emma's answer. She could be surveyed.
I was not looking for that information. I was just looking for what kind of social media these cities have. And I hit those statewide in my search.
Okay, so we don't know if these particular cities, like, let's say, the city of Banks has a Facebook page. We don't know if that's a private individual doing that for the city, or if it's the city-sponsored or...
All that we really know is they have a Facebook button on their website.
Okay, and that brings me...
Or Twitter, or R S S.
Okay, thank you. And that brings me, just as Joe alluded to it already, there has been for a very long time, a Deepwater Bay Facebook page, and it's been virtually unused. Go ahead. So, I, two things. I was reading over the, the notes that Curry gave us. It's, I'm very sensitive to, you know, some of the privacy issues that cities face when, when having a Facebook page, and some of the things that we have to dance around to, to produce it. And secondly, Counsel Bishop Brown is that her, her feelings about social media being a powerful force for advertising and for goodwill for us are absolutely spot on. They've changed the world. And so, I think that social media is huge, and I, I like Mr. Tean's idea about talking to the Chamber about it. And so, I'd be all for just, you know, giving the, the staff at least a break here. And let's, let's look into see if the Chamber might be willing to do this. And I've got, I've got a decade, a couple decades of empirical data about which, which weekends are gonna be good or not. But, of course, social media, well, help, or will enhance all those times. There's certain trends that, you know, when we got, since Martin Luther King Day, actually being a holiday, a special official state and federal holiday, it's, it's one of those weekends that is a bright spot in the middle of winter. All we can just pray for here is that we don't have snow that closes the passes, you know, and that can, that can slow stuff. That's all.
So, we can make contact with the Chamber, and if there is a Deepwater Bay Facebook page out there, maybe we can find out who, who we could talk to.
We can start another one, too.
Yeah, there's no limits.
Say, you know, one person can do it, a group of people can do it. It's, it's not the city, it's none of those regular regulations.
Right, yeah, and with all that in consideration, I think, you know, because I wasn't taking that into consideration before. So, in, in the interest of, of addressing those things, and I think the Chamber, or, or a private entity such as Michael Babinski, it might be the way to go instead.
That might be.
Boy, yeah, I was gonna say, Jerome kinda helped out here. He said you could start another one. I didn't know that. I thought it was much like webpages and such. They're registered, and that's the only thing that can do that. Because on that Deepwater Bay Facebook page... and that's the only thing that can do that. Because on that Deepwater Bay Facebook page, I remember now, I don't know if it's changed, because I, I don't do Facebook, kind of looked at it in probably six months or more. But all it was, was advertisements for Michael's band. And where it was getting played.
I recall that there were a few on there. And that's, he hasn't been posting anything on it lately that I know of. Is, I think it's kind of unused because the band has died unfortunately.
Oh.
Yeah.
And Facebook pages can go stay on Facebook, how you set them up, and who you allow to make comments, and yada, yada, friends. So, it may be advantageous to start another one.
Can't we just talk to people and see if anybody would be interested in?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, just one more comment on that. Because of the fact that, you know, in much contrast with Robert, I'm on there every morning for at least an hour or two. And now Tony's working down at the gas station, usually in the evenings as well. So what I know is that there are, you know, individual private pages, like the one that I have and the one that Robert has. There are open groups, there are closed groups, there are secret groups. So you can essentially, you can start a, a group as Friends of Deepwater Bay, for instance. And you can, people in order to join that group have to, you know, basically ask to be added to the group. The page administrator would then add them to the group. That would be, you know, for instance, an open group.
With a close?
No, a closed group. That would, no, an open group that would be available to anybody. There are authors who have pages. There are businesses that have pages. There are municipalities that have pages. So there's a lot of different options on there. And that's just Facebook. So, essentially, yeah, you're, you know, and maybe the Chamber would be a better entity to do that. Because you only do want to have one person deciding what, you know, how things could be posted, what you're going to post in return. You don't, you know, you don't necessarily want anybody, for instance, hijacking it for their own particular purpose, whatever that might be. So there's a lot of different options. And it's, I definitely believe it's worth it for.
Go on.
Can I make a motion on this? Can I make a motion that city staff will approach the Deepwater Bay Chamber of Commerce to explore if they would like to facilitate this and how we can make that happen?
I'll say.
Go ahead, please.
Dambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Tean?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Olsen?
Yes.
Makala?
Yes.
All right.
Somebody ever said no to their own motion?
Well, you know, break some of the record questions. Withdrawn and amended, but, you know, people do change their minds after they hear the discussion. Because there's that motion a second, then they, you know.
We're just thinking, why do you have to answer that? Sign the motion.
Just to make it official. Nothing's official until you post it on Facebook, you know.
That's right.
As we all know, Councilor Steve Sparks has resigned his councilorship. We need to discuss that a little bit.
You know, I've talked to Steve. He's okay. He wishes everybody well. He enjoyed his time here in the city council, but he's made some choices in his life. So with that said, Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept Steve Sparks' resignation. We vacate that seat.
And?
And, and my what?
And of course, we add the usual, thank you very much. Appreciate your service.
Yes.
One second.
Can we apply the words that, that, that he will be missed?
Yes. Go.
Grant?
Aye.
Tean?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Butcher Brett's, yes.
Olsen?
Yes.
Makala?
Yes.
Dambino?
Yes.
If I might ask the council, we will be advertising through these applications.
Right.
Time frame? What meeting would you, I think the best place to start, well, maybe timeframe. Do you want to advertise for a couple of weeks? Schedule interviews for the second meeting in February-ish, or?
I, I'd like to see, you know, it takes, it takes some things. Personally, I, I think the, the longer the time that, that the opening has to work through the community, the better. Up to a certain point, so I, I would be in favor of going for four weeks.
Yeah, the first meeting in March?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two.
Thirty days?
Yeah.
So schedule the interviews for the first meeting in March. What we normally do, and we'll get it, we'll get the posting out and spread the word on the website, et cetera, ASAP, till as much time as possible. We normally close those applications the Thursday, the end of the day Thursday, before that Tuesday meeting. So we've got time to prepare for that.
We need a motion on it.
If everybody's in agreement, we'll schedule the interviews for the first meeting in March.
Just a question. Do we have to have it open for a certain time? Or can we just say, it's open until Phil, when you see that on a lot of other vacancies?
I'd just be worried that it would drag on.
Yeah. Can we make sure that, I mean, I don't know if we do that, but it's such a perfect place. Is that one place where it's a note, put a notice is up at the post office?
Absolutely.
Like, you know, we can put it like, "Wipe it." Profile of unnamed person.
Adam?
Free war, they're supposed to be soul.
I don't want him scared out. Makes time to be scared out. Okay, thank you.
P M B, Arbor Master Plan, Request for Full Hope, Marine Engineering Consulting Service, bid award, ready?
Yeah, this was worked on by Larry. He wrote up the RFP, did a really good job. We got some excellent proposals. We did get a whole lot of them, but we got some really good firms that really know their stuff. Each proposal was, was in detail. I hope everybody got a chance to kind of read through a lot of them. One price was cash out McDonald's. Bit high. They, they did a pretty good job for us in the design concept of the harbor. But I kinda just felt that that was quite high. Seeing as the other three were kind of the same ballpark.
They're very bad at themselves.
Are they including something in that that beyond the scope of what?
No, no, they, they added a lot of monies in the same scope in, in designs. And, mainly in that, it was, some of the project management and the, the costs of their work really jumped off the table. But I, I did create a sheet that had their estimates on there. And I took into account the duration of, of time. Larry and I looked at it. Larry had a lot of good points, too. Talked about it. And we, we kind of boiled down to P M B, forty-nine, five, and Burger A-Ban. So, talking to our attorney, probably recommended that go in with the lowest.
But we've also had good experience with P M B. They've already worked for us. Some of them know these guys.
Yeah, they were, Kevin Green mentioned them, and also, but-
These guys worked with Toledo.
Yeah.
Great. Do you, do we have to go with the lowest? Am I, I mean?
Our policies are written that way. Unless, unless the P B C comes into effect, which is quality based, for anything over a hundred thousand dollars for engineering, it's a state mandate that you have to look at their qualification.
Over a thousand, if they're not there.
No.
I just-
And I think when you do the RFP, you should automatically know that you're gonna be over that amount in state, but it will be a, a huge-
Is it something of a certain amount of value? You use them, somebody that you've used and know and-
And in this case, they gave us the least expensive one. With the exception of Hat Lot McDonald.
All right.
Yeah, they were valued at a price.
Were the P M B come up? I was gonna find out.
They're roughly, they're just under fifty-two. It's like forty-nine-five. And then one of the, Larry's recommendation is forty-nine-eight or something like that. It's like really close.
They've talked to say the three hundred and eighty-dollar difference.
Yeah. Well, that just says-
Time frame difference.
What's that?
They need a budget.
All right.
It's public record, yeah.
Can I make a motion? And then we can do a discussion?
Yes.
I, I move that we accept P M B's bid for forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for the master, Arbor Master Plan.
Say.
Circuit, please. Did you have someone?
No.
No, these guys are qualified.
This is good news.
Question.
Tean?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Olsen?
Yeah.
Makala?
Yes.
Dambino?
Yes.
Right. Aye.
We're there already. Thank you.
And we have a contest that's presented by the Oregon Mayor's Association. They probably were mayor. And what it does involves young people. And we have the, the contest to have them, or give them a chance to let everybody know what they would do if, if they were the mayor of a, of a city. And it's, I've been to the last three of these. And the young people really get into it. So this is something that we definitely want to sponsor. And not only that, but we want to get it across the street for the neighborhood, neighborhood kids to go to, get to. So, that being said, yeah, like, I'm-
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a answer. Just in front of you, is there, what's the age of now?
Three.
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 Uh, grades four through five, six through eight, nine through twelve. Four through five is a poster, six through eight is an essay, and nine through twelve is digital media presentation.
I'll share this with you if you want.
I got it. Thanks.
And how much is our experience, goes anywhere across the city, Mr. Mayor?
If I do?
We're not buying the apple I've had, are we? Let's give it as part of the E P M.
No. If, if I might, the council needs to decide when the, when the city's deadline date's gonna be. Because O M A's deadline, the city's winners at each category needs to be submitted to O M A by no later than May sixteenth. And so, we need to decide, maybe schedule the, the awards for the first meeting in May, first council meeting in May. Just a suggestion. That would be May third. The, the second sheet, the contest information, the second bullet, talks about identify your local prizes. Where your local prize is gonna be. O M A's prizes is the, I've had. So, and they have some suggestions. Cash awards, savings bond, or gift cards, lunch with the mayor, and/or shadow the mayor for a day.
Shadow the mayor for a day.
You know, I'm really willing to contribute a, a meal for, with the mayor for that part of the prize.
There's one, yeah. Nice, thank you.
So is, would the prizes be city funds, or does have to be donations?
The, the, the city will hold its contest. And then, and then the city council will pick from the three categories, a winner to be submitted onto O M A. So for the prizes, yes, it's up to the city. What do you want to do?
Is it a different, middle school, middle school, and high school? Or do we just pick one that we say we're gonna accept? Or are we accepting them all?
Well, you're gonna, you're, you're, well, you're gonna offer, there's the three categories.
Sure.
And so the local contest would put out an announcement, a poster, a flyer, outreach. You can go to schools and, and provide information. City Deepwater Bay's contest, we have three categories. The city council will select the winner for each category. So you're gonna have three winners. Yeah. And so, so you may have three winners and a mayor for each.
And so, do the, the young people that are competing here at the local level, do they have to go, do they go to the state and they present the program at the state?
And the city is responsible for submitting its winners.
Right. And so they would go to the state and compete at the state level, right? Is that the idea?
No, the state would pick.
I don't know. They asked me.
Oh, I was just wondering if there's, if there's gonna, because some, I could just see that. There might be somebody that wants this week that doesn't have the funds to take a trip to Salem.
I think what begins when we submit our winners, then at the state level, they would pick.
Right. Does that mean that person needs to travel to Salem?
If they're the winners.
Well, should we have a little fund set aside for traveling money for?
If they're the winners of this state's program.
The winners of the state.
Actually, the way it's handled is that these contests take place at the mayor's conference in, in August.
The state, the state level. But if the city of Deepwater Bay is going to have its contest and select its three categories, to submit to the state by May sixteenth, that's what.
And the way-
And this year, this year, we are Newport, Deepwater Bay, and Lake City are hosting the mayor's conference.
Clearly, we have to travel, is what you're saying. So, but what we're saying is, is that, is that traveling, we're going to the mayor's concert, conference, wouldn't be for our winners. It would be for the winners who the mayor-
The O M A.
The O M A chooses, right.
Three, one.
Yeah. So I really like this. It's great.
Get kids involved in the city.
I just wish my daughter, who's got lots of personality and smarts, she's a software-
Does she have a book to read?
She's, she's, she's a software at the university. So she, she could, like, she's-
I had an eight-year-old on call and suggested putting gatorade in drinking water. So.
Do I have a second?
Counselor? Perry, do we have an idea, or, no, no, do we have an idea of what this cost in the past? What we spent?
I really don't have any way to hear the information on that.
You know, the last time I remember the city really participating in this, it was structured differently. There was not a local contest for the, for the city to submit its winners. It was, you provided the information to the local students and they submitted directly to the O M A. So this is structured differently. And it's kind of cool, because now we can have our own contest also.
So we kind of need to get on this because we're gonna have to see them. So, so we're gonna need to determine a, a prize level or an expenditure for the prize, or how much, and then how we're gonna publicize this. And to whom? It's not just to Deepwater Bay kids. It could be within the county, or?
Well, in Deepwater Bay, like, City Newport is probably doing this. So it's, it's-
So you're, Deepwater Bay and the unincorporated areas of Deepwater Bay, like, I think the beach, Atlantic Beach.
What I would suggest is, where, where do Deepwater Bay kids go to school? Lake City? I, if, if, if we're going to visit a school and say, hey, if you're in Deepwater Bay doing this contest, we would go to Lake City. I think there's some kids going to Newport, but they've already gone to Lake City. So just a suggestion. The outreach we would conduct is, is up to the council.
But Deepwater Bay Kids Own's a great place, because they have teenage kids.
Go ahead, Robert. I think, if I may, in, in the interest of getting this going right away, rather than discuss what the prizes would be, first, one-
I think, if I may, uh in in the interest of getting this going right away, rather than discuss what the prizes would be, uh lunch, lunch with the mayor at the C-HAG. Mayor at the C-HAG. Um but but I think we should simply, yeah, we should simply come up with a cash idea of a prize. We can worry about what that prize would be later, like maybe, you know, tickets to the old turning place or something like that. So I'd come up with an amount of money and where we're gonna advertise and headline, that way we can get it going.
Well, and I think we should expand this a little bit, most of them, you know, then, okay, lunch with the mayor, lunch with the city council, at the C-HAG.
And their family.
And their families and their cats, you know.
We're cousins, everybody.
See, his counsel team is also.
He's always thinking. Right, but we have a great promotion.
Oh, include in the packet right after the second page that says contest information, OMA actually provided a a a draft flyer for cities to use where you need to enter your local contest deadline date. Uh we can put posters, you know, it's an informational poster, on the back of it is the official entry form. So so uh Council Dambino, right, if we should be going on this. Um kids work pretty fast, May sixteenth will come to you before you know it.
And that's our deadline. Given that we did that, it'd be a great spring break promotion, you know.
So do you feel that with with the deadline for the city to submit its three winners to OMA, no later than May sixteenth, do you feel that scheduling the awards for the May third meeting?
That gives us three days to look over who knows how many different for each category. Well, let's hope that we have that problem, that'd be great.
We're gonna take a great deal of, I mean, like, for instance, there may be, let's say, maybe three or four uh young people that are gonna be falling in the digital media thing. We're gonna have to watch all that to make decisions, I mean, how do we set that up?
So are we, is that something we do during council meetings, or can we meet outside of council meetings just for the purposes of reviewing this stuff?
Yeah, maybe close it a couple of weeks before, I mean, the the reason I'm kinda focused on May third council meeting is that's the last meeting before our deadline is submitted.
That's probably when we should announce the winners.
Uh announce the winners at that.
But we need some time to be able to review this.
It's a suggestion, how about a subcommittee that's gonna meet your respective little council meeting to review all these applicants' materials?
Might be the best way to go.
Yeah.
Well, would it be a corner if you're just looking for?
Uh the subcommittee would be working toward a recommendation to the former governing body, so it would.
What's that, the HAV, uh HAV, HAVOC, or what was that called?
HAVOC?
Yeah.
Well, uh I will have to say that uh the categories of the high school, if we get if we get a high school uh applicant, uh applicants, uh contestants, then we're gonna have to schedule some time for for them to present.
Yeah, right. And by the way, I would volunteer to be part of that.
I would love to be a part of it. Unless they've just got a straight-up video that we can watch, you know, but a PowerPoint contest and everything to go along with it. But they can split that too, you know.
It's not in some some roundtable, in any case, we can do it, and it's well worth the time to do it.
Oh, absolutely.
The uh elementary school is easy, I mean, you should have seen some of the posters that they have up there. They were uh ingenious, these little kids come up with these ideas.
Well, you know, the thing is, is we get a hold of the Lake City schools, they might put this on their curriculum to actually do, you know.
Is it Lake City gonna bring this to their own council?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
The city is gonna do the same thing.
But we would do it for Lake City schools for those Depot Bay.
I understand, yeah.
So where do we go, folks?
Well, shall we discuss what kind of allotment for each prize should be, a dollar amount, and then we can figure out what that prize or an award would be? I always thought that cash was a great gift.
Well.
Second one?
Yeah.
Cash.
Yeah.
You know, those second savings bonds.
Icons, maybe, and like, so, I think bucks, hundred bucks for winner, or maybe, what do you think?
I'd take fifty bucks for for contestants. We're gonna take them to dinner too, right?
Council, right?
Right.
Council's taking them to dinner.
Yeah, you you're gonna go, right?
Yeah. All of them. What's that?
Um should it be tiered, fifty for elementary, seventy five, no?
I think so, fifty bucks for an elementary kid would be a lot versus to a high school kid.
Good deal.
Might not be, or?
Why don't you do a fifty fifty and fifty, and I'll kick in a fifty fifty?
Oh, thank you very much.
So make it a hundred, a hundred, a hundred.
Yeah.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Board.
Are you putting up the money, John?
Yeah, fifty.
Yeah.
It's a year to do another fifty yourself.
Just so long as it's a fifty-dollar bill, because it's got my name on it.
Maybe not for long.
We're talking about.
So uh. Deadline, that means that's gonna be in April, April fifteenth, it's a Friday, will that be a good deadline? Five P M, April fifteenth, Friday.
Well, are you talking about, are you talking about a meeting where we review all this stuff?
No, that's the deadline before them to submit it.
I mean, so this one, you have to have one meeting to review the schedule.
That would give us two weeks, two and a half weeks before the next council meeting.
Yeah.
And we could have a, uh, yeah, I would think that a great committee, since John is here, are you gonna be here in May, in April, April? Are you gonna be here in April?
I hope not.
I was just thinking that we could have a committee of two council people and one uh from the public to to sit in and judge.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, I think we have enough information, I think. For for putting out the announcement.
Sure.
City Depot Bay's hosting this contest, uh submit your um by category, uh your uh thing.
Presentation.
No later than five P M, April fifteenth, it will be reviewed and awards will be announced at the May. I would think we even need to put in a poster when the awards will be, but we need to know when they leave, you know, for them to just submit, so.
So I think we're.
It's like a mayoral resume, if they put, if they work.
And it does say, uh, on the entry form, submissions must be accompanied by a completed entry form, and must be received no later than, and we put the date in. So we need to keep in mind how long it's gonna take us to review all the submissions.
Well, that's one we got in the library.
Two, three minutes, I don't know.
Well, if we have a subcommittee, though, could you meet like once and twice within the two and a half weeks?
Yeah, we could meet on Monday and Wednesday, you know.
Where are they, where are they sent, are they sending them, are they bringing them into the city hall?
Um either way.
Make an email to us if they're uh a uh a presentation by a tax.
Email.
We should have an email address available.
Yep.
I've heard an email, a poster, though, or something like that.
They have to scan, you know.
Like a PDF or?
Yeah, the poster size must be a minimum of seventeen inches and a maximum of twenty-eight inches in height or width. Um and they're gonna be local kids, so they could go.
Yeah.
Here.
This is a great sign.
Yeah.
So do we need to determine a HAVOC, is that the first committee for this?
Sounds like it's you and me so far. Oh, no.
Next guy.
Well, I see Pat Neil out there. Pat?
Yes.
Would you be willing to uh help judge these uh contestants?
Yeah, I guess so. I, it's a, this is the first time I've ever heard anything like this.
This'd be great.
I'm glad to try.
Perfect.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay, we'll get the posters out, get the word out.
Great, great.
So I think you'll be knowing your mark.
Um so Mister Woodmark offered to match fifty dollars per category for the city's fifty dollars, so is, are we, are you agreeing now?
Can we either make a motion and accept that, or?
Yeah.
So we're gonna keep the awards all the same, three times fifty.
Three times a hundred.
Well, fifty's a lot.
Fifty's a lot, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There you go. Mister Mayor, I move that we uh accept the offer from Mister Woodmark of fifty dollars and match it with fifty-dollar city fund, uh funds to uh facilitate one hundred dollar awards in each category for the mayors.
And and there aren't much with mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's not city funds, but yeah.
Right, right, oh, that's, we don't have to, yeah, we gotta name it, yeah.
I will, actually, I think we should uh say that the gifts are being presented by uh Blue Heron or Woodmark, or however you wanna do it, uh the C-HAG and the City of Depot Bay.
Right, that'd be great, that'd be a good point. Yeah.
How do you want that done?
John.
John.
John, Kelly, Woodmark.
Right on.
One second, Washington.
Call, please.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Olson?
Yeah.
Mathel?
Yes.
Dambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
T?
Yes.
Very nice, thank you, people.
Yeah, thank you, that's awesome.
These kids are really creative, I'll tell ya. Uh okay, item D, downtown restroom lease, Woodmark, a blue hair, who's got a note here, everybody has it in front of them?
I have a question for 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 you, Mr. Woodmark. What was the percentage increase we gave to the Robinsons, or, I mean, that was three percent, is it not, three percent?
I believe so.
I believe it was, too. So, yeah, well, actually, I uh moved that we uh renew the contract with Mister Woodmark, given the three percent each year, same as we did to Robinsons, and everything else in the contract remains the same, isn't that right, John?
I have to.
Did you ask for a font, we gave the Robinsons three, didn't we?
Yeah.
It should be consistent.
One other thing is, we'd like to bring up is, I think that we need to put in, in both bathrooms, a changing table for.
Is there, there's room, isn't there?
There's plenty of room, um it's the one complaint I hear.
Yeah.
Is that we don't have a changing table either on the restrooms?
Sure.
Oh, is that a changing table?
Changing table for baby.
I think, I think that those may be available through the county services. We can check on that, would you check on that?
And it should be in each.
Yeah.
Right.
So, uh.
Not if you have the three, that's fine.
I just stay consistent with the Robinsons.
And uh.
Robinsons, excuse me.
I, and I see that uh Mister Woodmark has the, do you have the the changing table written down here?
No.
Uh but I I like that idea. Can we, can we put, uh, can we, uh, is there, we need a budget to make it happen?
Yeah, I wasn't, oh, no, fine, I can get him.
No, we'll get him done.
I can get him a municipal price on.
Hey, could we, uh, do we want to make a decision on that now, so that we don't have to revisit and budget up that X amount of dollars?
Yeah, it would probably be, it was more than six hundred dollars for two of them.
Do you want one in the men's room?
Yes.
That's what I was about to say, that single fathers have requested that you put them in men's rooms.
Sure. Let's do it. So in any case, I'll reiterate my motion, I move that we accept Mister Woodmark's renewal with a three percent picker each year, and then we also install these restroom changing tables for children.
Call question.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Dambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
T?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Rob. We need, uh, have you got that, Larry, on the item B, schedule public hearing?
Um sure. If the um uh planning commission has uh done through drafting and having public hearing on the the planning development as well as parking amendments, and so they have now folded their recommendation onto the city council, so um it's basically up to the city council when you want to uh schedule the public hearing to consider those amendments. There's, it's a legislative amendment, so there's no guideline on it, so it's basically your expression of the law.
We have those amendments before, uh, in our packet.
Well, and and in addition to that, um do you, these amendments have not yet been legally reviewed?
That's correct, yeah.
Do you want a legal review of of the proposal coming to you from the planning commission before you start your public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye. Good stat.
We should touch base with P and D.
Yeah, because that's gonna take.
Yeah.
So maybe we, maybe we get that all and find out at this time, and then come back and actually, we'll schedule it.
And we have that kind of time?
We, yeah. That's it?
So if it's all right, we'll touch base with with uh the city attorney, and then on the next agenda, we'll report back and then maybe have this agenda on again, who are sending this to?
With a copy of the, the.
They're on the website, right? But no, you have received our copies.
Well, I see a few letters of correspondence that are.
Yes, I have about three, um one is from Zoe Teckness, and she is writing about, um, mm, crosswalks.
Good work.
So she's asking the city to take a first step to ensure resident safety by making a formal request to ODOT to bring about a possible situation impacting a crosswalk close to neighbors for kids across all across. When this came in, I I, you know, we're working on our transportation system plan update, and I thought this would be good information to send to the people working on that update, but what Zoe's asking is something a little bit different. Um she's asking the city to petition the state to put in a crosswalk close to neighbors for kids. It's certainly, we should provide this information to the consulting team working on the transportation system plan, and it, but it's up to you if you, if you want to also send a letter to ODOT and raise the issue.
Yeah, I believe, and I believe the crosswalk, yeah, school. Um, I believe, because there's already leaving, but, and I believe crosswalk, yeah, schoolhouse, I think is where she was asking. Um, it's already included in the ODOT twenty fifteen, twenty eighteen step.
It almost got discussed about it, or?
Wasn't that associated with this, uh, engine corner we were trying to make?
Yeah, we were doing the intersection.
And then it got turned down, right, yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna drive in this year, back to this intersection.
If you'd like, we can do a little bit of research, see what avenues are available, like I say, I think this should go to the consulting team working on our transportation system plan. Um, maybe we can refresh our memories on where this already is, because it's not, it's not like, it hasn't been talked about and discussed.
So you, uh, traffic, the current traffic studies overdue.